So we can start? No, that we can do.
All right, we'll go ahead and call me into order now.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So the reason I asked for a study session?
Well, we need to approve the agenda first. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the study session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for the study session.
All right, any discussion? All as a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's pose. All right. Now you're on.
So the reason I asked for a study session is we're meeting here if we get ready for our levy election for the 2020 year. And we're working on building a committee, but there's some work that the board is going to need to do. Rather than have you look at numbers for the first time at the November meeting, I wanted Ashley to put together some projections and talking points for you to be thinking about now, so that you can have questions or members that are either here tonight that you're going to be on the committee or that will have representatives there can prepare their questions as well, so that we can kind of get a very complete package together for so in November, so it's very easy for the board to be able to come to a decision and move forward, because we do have deadlines that are a little bit different than they have been in the past with the levy, because now we have a step where we have to get it approved by OSPI before we can submit it to the county. And the process to getting it approved by OSPI starts with sending in whatever the board decides is what we're going to do to the ESD office, and they check it off and tell us it's ready, and then send it, then we can send it to
The county.
OSPI. And we have a deadline for their
In order to do a February election, we have to send it by December. It has to be approved and filed resolution by December 15th, and that means I have to get everything to the state prior to that. So we're super tight timing.
Does that include, do we have to do a four-year projection of expenditure for the
I've already planned, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and
We have to do that every year now.
Yeah, we approve it during the budget process, that four-year budget.
Okay.
So, and then we have that OS, a one-page OSPI document where we trend out the four years of expenditures and revenues and all that.
Okay.
So I'm going to go grab these documents real quick.
And then you need to sit or stand or whatever's most comfortable, since you're presenting.
Okay, come on back.
So that's December 15th.
So if, you know, we'll have the board meeting in mid-November, the board approves that, that gives Ashley time to finish the submission to OSPI, which we'll mostly have done, but won't have all the numbers filled in until you approve that number. And, and then we'll be able to submit that and get it turned in by the end of November, probably beginning of December.
And then there's a certain filing period?
From, once it gets to the state, it used to be weeks, it's down to a couple days.
Okay, so there's time, I know that there's a time period that you have to file to get it onto a ballot.
Right, that's what our December 15th date, it has to be filed with the county by December 15th, to be on the February ballot.
Okay. Wow, that's a really short turnaround.
Yeah, I think we've been so focused with all of the budgeting changes and stuff that we kind of
Yeah.
And so now we're under a little bit tighter timeline, but
I did two different things. One, I put together a little summation of of what we can or will be using our enrichment levy on, based upon the new laws. So that's the little word document. So basically, I have to put together a little synopsis and submit it to the state stating, if our levy is approved, this is what we would expect to be spending our levy on. It tends to be put through as a, we expect it to include, but not be limited to this list. And so those items, I tried to go through and think of all the items that we currently do or are planning on doing that would actually fit these criterias. So class size reduction, because we do have that 17 to 1 compliance in kindergarten through third grade, special education, early learning, music, maintenance and operation, athletics, extracurricular activities, instructional interventions, the Avid program, assessment, PSAT testing, pupil transportation, food service, classroom technology and safety, professional learning for staff, our early kindergarten program that we're going to be starting, and then staffing beyond the prototypical funding model, to include but not limited to teachers and support staff, counselors, and nursing staff. Now, when it comes to the actual staffing portion, there are going to be ones and figures for you, so you can see where those numbers are actually coming from. So, the state funds 33.987 classified staff for us. That's literally under four, our 34 classified staff, but we have 137 classified staff members. So we have over 103.013 classified staff members that are fully unfunded by the state.
How many?
103.013.
Classified?
Mm-hmm, that are unfunded. The state funds 107 teachers for us, but we currently have 151 teachers, and so we have 44 teachers that are unfunded. The state also funds 6.08 administrative staff, and we at this point have 13 technical certificated administrators, so over half of our admin is currently unfunded as well, our certificated admin.
Which is what number, I'm sorry if I missed that?
It's 6.08, it's funded, and we have 13.
So seven, basically.
So, we have quite a few staff members that are unfunded, so when you're looking at levy dollars and where your levy is actually going, a lot of it's going to funding those types of supports. So the list that I have given are the types of items that would be, that we would be paying for with our levy dollars. Then, once we start looking at the actual programs that we need to fund, then we can actually determine what is it that we need from a levy. Now, you have a black and white copy, because black and white pages cost less, but no problem, but what I can tell you
I really appreciate that on behalf of the people.
No problem. Okay, but what I'm going to tell you, so right now, this 2020 levy, this is our last year of our current approved levy, okay? So we're at that mark, that's sort of the darkest of that 2020 column, that says 4,630,000. That's where our current levy is, okay? That's what I'm going to be certifying in November. So, that's at $1.99, that's what our current voter-approved levy is. Now, when the cap was lifted from $1.50 up to 2.50, it gives us the capacity to run a levy up to 2.50 per thousand of assessed value, based upon where we fall in that range. So, we have the ability to levy an additional 51 cents if we so chose to do so. So what I did is I turned around and I sort of did just a quick matrix of anywhere from $1.99, 210, 220, all the way up to 2.50 and where that would put us. Now
That's the maximum.
Yep, 2.50 is the maximum by state law. So, the form, in the 2021 column, this would be the first year of our new levy, the 4,992,000, that's the very minimum that we can run and sustain
Programs.
Yeah, and we're talking, literally bare minimum, no curriculum, no new curriculum adoption, no two, no new IT infrastructure, nothing like that, but that would get us where we are right now for next year.
Maintaining what we currently have.
That's it.
But again, no new IT, so that's not
Right.
Missing any stuff
That breaks.
That breaks or anything else.
Where was the previous levy at when it was approved?
4.6 million.
What was the rate per thousand?
The rate per thousand?
$1.99.
So it's not $1.99 now, then?
It is, it is currently, well, right now So right now, what our current approved levy is, is $1.99 per thousand of assessed value.
So what was it a few years ago when we ran it?
When we passed the levy.
Because our assessed value's gone up, so our levy
Well, what we did
Our levy rate's gone down.
What we did, Craig, was we passed a levy for 4 million some odd thousand dollars. We didn't pass a levy saying it will cost you $2 per thousand.
But we didn't have those numbers, but we can get those.
But that should still be
We had an, yeah.
I get that, that should still, there should still be a dollar per thousand, and that dollar per thousand should be less today than it was four years ago, because the assessed value's gone up.
Correct, and it's spread out.
So, I, no, I want to know what that is.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, I can pull it, it's just before my time, so I can find it though.
I'm sure, but I'd like to know what that is, I mean, that's a, it's a sales point.
Yeah, so, because as of, as of right now, when everything hits for everybody's property tax statements
Right.
They're getting assessed on the $1.99
Right.
Or the 4.6 million.
But I think what Craig's point is, is we've been careful in, on the last one, when we ran the levy, we didn't raise the cents per person, per thousand, even though, you know, other things, the total amount might have been different, so we're hoping to do that again.
Denise, can you pull the old resolution for the levy from four years ago? That would be the easiest place to find it.
Yeah, because there would have to be a conversion or something
Yeah.
I mean, just for the legal stuff for the accessory.
Yeah, so, getting us to the 4.99 is going to keep us where we are at currently. Now, the things are that we've actually been looking at is we, so we did the ELA adoption for new curriculum, K5. Currently, our upper campus is in need of a new ELA adoption. I think Lisa said they're on five years currently.
No, they're on the eighth year.
Eighth year, okay.
The English Language Arts materials here, and an example is that, it might be on the ninth year, because last year was the first year that the license for the teachers to have the online access for the curriculum ran out, and they were able to give us another year of it, but now they don't even do the online version of that curriculum anymore, so our teachers have no online support for their secondary English Language Arts curriculum this year, because it no longer exists.
And that's how it will continue until we adopt new ELA curriculum for our upper campuses. Now, when we were trying to ballpark what it could be for an upper campus ELA, it could be upwards of about 200, 250,000, so this is something that we're looking at when we're looking at having to run a levy, how much does it cost then to do that? Because that's one of the bigger cost items. And then also our IT infrastructure. We have, we've had to cut back because of the levy rollback that we were under on updating technology, but you can only cut back on that for so long before all of your, your items are so outdated that they're not going to be able to run. So if we need, if we want money to continue to update technology and update our curriculum, where we would really need to be as far as a levy goes is at that 5.468 million, which is, right now, based upon our assessed value, would be the 2.30. So those were the two big-ticket items that we looked at when trying to determine where, what ballpark area we would need to be at for levy purposes.
So, just a side question here, when you did the assessed value projections here, did you just use a standard, what, cost of living or?
So, it's, it's yes, but it's done by the state. So I used the state percentages when you're looking up there at the assessed value with timber. It's the same numbers that the state runs to be able to predict what our revenues are going to be in future years, so I wanted to make sure that it was consistent, and so that's what they used, so that's what I ended up using. And then, just simple calculation, divided by 1,000 and times it by the assessed rate that we're looking at. Now, one of the things that I, that I did so that we could look and see quick snapshot-wise, what's that going to cost your average taxpayer? Now, I, I can change this, but I used
That was bond.
I can, yeah, that's 49 million, that's the bond. I can use the, I used an average home value of 300,000. Now, that may not be the average home value. I've seen some information that states that the average home value for Mason County would be 167,000.
That's the whole county?
That's the entire county, though. Okay, so I did 300,000 just to say, taking into account some of our bigger neighborhoods, okay? If we did the 210 rate, it would increase their property taxes for the year by 630 dollars.
The 210?
Yep, the 210, and then if you went up to 2.30, it would increase it by 690. If you did the 2.50 rate, it increases it by 7.50 for the year.
That's an increase?
That's an increase, okay.
And what will, what will the bond rate per taxes that they're paying, how much will that decrease?
So, that's going to decrease, it, well, technically, it goes down 31 cents per thousand, which on a $300,000 home is about $108. Now, the caveat is, is when you roll back on debt service, we roll back and we're using our fund balance to pay debt for the 2020 calendar year, but that fund balance doesn't replenish itself until you collect money again from the citizens in order to make those next payments. So we had a healthy fund balance that we can use to help offset the collections from the community for the next year, but then it's going to drop down to 800,000. 800,000 is not enough to pay our 3.3 million dollars in bond payments, and so we'll have to turn around and we'll have to go back up to what we're collecting currently in order to pay those in 2021, if that makes sense.
So it's just a one-year rollback?
Yes, because our, well, and our payments are going to continue to increase, our debt service.
I don't remember it being a one-year rollback.
Yeah, it has to be a one-year rollback, because our fund balance drops to 800,000. So it's, it's a 31 cent on the thousand rollback for our 2020 year, for our budget, basically, the budget that we just did.
Okay.
So, and then I have some information, so that, are the debt service rolled back at 36 cents beginning in 2020, but will need to be increased in future years as debt service payments will increase with time, and then if we went with 2.30, it would equate to a 31 cent increase per thousand of assessed. So there's the resolution for your guys' original
Yeah, 2.36, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so it's dropped 37 cents
Okay.
Over the last four years.
So the 1.99 used to be 2.36?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So going out for 2.30 would be less
Than what it was?
Than it was, what it was.
Well, and that, is there any stipulations of which it requires a supermajority to pass? If you, if you increase the levy amount, does it require a supermajority?
No. Levy's a majority plus one.
Just levy across the board?
Yep.
50% plus one.
So, and then, one of the other things that has to be decided, obviously, we have a choice to make as far as how many years you're going to go out for levy, anywhere from one to four. Historically, I think you guys have done four?
The last couple have been four.
Three out of us.
Yes, so that's also a decision. Now, one of the things that needs to be thought about is the amount of unfunded mandates that are coming down from the state on a year-to-year basis now, so whatever we lock ourselves into now is what we will be collecting four years from now. So, if that, if we do choose to do a four-year levy.
And that's, that's one thing that I think we want to gather some more data for, for our more extensive board discussion, because Ashley is hearing at recent trainings and meetings for finance directors from different people around the state, that there is a lot of concern that some of the things that the legislators building in, legislators are building into mandates for us are creating expenses that we don't know about or aren't sure how those are going to impact. And I think a really big one is the transition to the SEB, the School Employees Benefits Board, the expenses for districts and our employees are pretty significant, and, and we're fighting more significant by the day. So, you know, again, when we come back to talking to the levy dollars and, and we talk about how many staff members aren't funded, well, with SEB, it's the same thing, so they are only funding us the amount to pay for, you know, like, right now, we get a percentage of, or a certain amount of dollars for all of our employees that are used
And then we pull it.
But under the new deal, we are only getting the dollars, well, and it happened with that too, but the dollar amount was less significant, so we're only getting the dollars for the staff that are in the prototypical model, but we have to pay the state, the, back the amount
For every employee.
We get money from OSPI, or, you know, where we get our money, and then we have to pay SEB the amount for every employee that we have. So So the dollar, that's another impact on us, and that's part of, you know, the whole budgeting process, and as, if that doesn't change, or there is already rumbling that they're realizing that running the program is more expensive than they thought it was, and they're going to want to raise costs when
Yeah.
You know, school districts are kind of locked into now the IB
IPT.
IPD, which is pretty low percent increase every year, so if they were to raise their costs above that, and then, you know, we still have employees that have to be compensated and things, so it could create some pretty significant impacts to budget planning. So I think we want to ask more questions and have more answers for you that we don't have yet, before we I, I mean, my inclination is, is to go for four years, because it, we know what we can plan for, but if there are too many unknowns, we need to take that into consideration, too.
And then another really big impact that we're seeing here specifically in Washington State is minimum wage. So minimum wage increases again in January. The amount of letters that I've received from our vendors, talking about rate increases beginning in January, is much higher than what we have received in the past. Normally, your utilities, you can expect to increase maybe 2, 2.5, potentially 3% each year. We've seen anywhere from a 5 to 8% increase now, and they're all stating that it's due to the minimum wage increase, because minimum wage is now going up to, what, 1250, $13 as of January 2020? So everybody else is raising their rates then as well. So normally, when you trend out, you're trending out at, you know, a 3% expense trend over, over the years for your normal consumables, and we can't do that now. We're having to, we're having to trend out at anywhere from 5 to 8% for these consumables in order to keep up with the market. This is the last year of the mandated minimum wage increase. After that, it's all subject to inflationary CPI factors, which, again, we don't know what that's going to be, so
But there is also the potential for a federal minimum wage
Increase. Yes, so, all of those factors, it's making this process a tad bit more difficult and convoluted to try to determine what it is and where we actually should be, and not put us into a bind. Some of the other districts are opting to go with, and these are in communities that have already previously approved much higher levies, they're opting to go for levies higher than 2.50, and then allow the county to roll them back in hopes that the legislature comes to the table and lifts the lid again, and allows them to continue to collect more. I don't think in our community, something like that would necessarily work. So, that's, yep, so that's not an option on our table, so then it's looking at what capacity we do have, what we could get approved, and making a plan that would both meet our needs and meet the community's needs.
And I don't want to speak for you all, I want you guys to be able to talk and ask more questions, but it's, I believe that our board and our community would be most comfortable with something that is as close as it can be to what we've
Asked for.
Approved in the past.
I don't want to ask for more
Yeah.
More dollars per thousand. I mean, I'm really stuck on the dollars per thousand.
Exactly.
And as far as the term of the levy, you know, if you can live with a four-year levy, that, that actually is better. I mean, it's better for the voters, and it's better for the possibility of passing a levy, I think, because they know what, what it's going to be for four years, instead of coming back every two or three years and saying, oh, we need a little bit more. And I realize that puts you in a crunch, because then if there are mandates that come down that require us to pay a whole lot more money for a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't want anyway, then we have to cut someplace else.
Exactly, and
So
That's just something that we have to live with. I mean, it's, it's obviously, on that side, it's a business decision, and it's something that you do find a way to work around. But I think the, the most important thing this time around is just making sure that we can go to something, we can bring something to the community that's reasonable, and that we have the backing to show why it's needed, so.
Can I go back to something that Craig brought up? Because I either misheard it, or maybe you misheard him. But the math didn't work for me. He brought up, you know, you have the sheet here with the, the rates, and he brought up, is that 750 to 630, 690, is that the increase? That, to me, is the amount of the tax.
Yeah, that's the way it reads, the yearly tax for a home.
Oh, the increase would be
The difference between the two.
153.
Correct, correct, the increase is actually, so, the, so at the 210 rate, to get up to the 2.30 rate, the, the actual increase between those is the $60, if that makes sense. The difference between the 630 to 690.
So, it's 11 cents more than what the 1.99 is, and that actually translates to $33. The, this is the math I'm using, and the, the, the one that comes at 750, the increase is $153.
From the $1.99?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the way, the way you explained it was, it's a $750 a year increase.
Over the $1.99?
Right, that's how, that's how I heard you say it, too.
Sorry, no, I didn't, I didn't mean
Great, I thought that was wrong.
Yeah, I didn't intend to do that.
I didn't take it that way.
I did.
And, well, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I, I, I heard it that way, too, Ashley, but I know that's not what
No, exactly, no, 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 that, that would be a crazy high increase. Yeah, so that's, that's not what we're intending.
You and I.
Okay, we got it.
You guys were lying, I was like
I got her.
You're like, yeah, that's reasonable, right? Just 750, like an extra mortgage payment or something.
No, it's like $60.
Exactly, exactly, over the course of that time period. Basically, what I was trying to do with those numbers is actually show, what is the actual difference when you go from 210 to 220, or 220 to 2.30, for the public? Because sometimes when you think of, of, well, if we're going to approve 2.30 instead of 2.40, what's the actual impact to a homeowner? And that's, that's what I was getting at with those, not that we were going to increase their taxes by 7.50 over what they're already paying.
Be nice.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, so, do you guys have any questions for me while I'm up here?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I, I'm, make it explain to me a little better, I, the 36 cent rollback, I wasn't under the, I thought that was a permanent rollback. And so, my concern is rolling that back for a year, having to go back again the year after that, the impact that that, that does, I don't know the wisdom
That brings that
I don't know the wisdom behind doing that
So
Or just keeping it at a rate that is, provides the collection we need, and just going to go forward.
The problem is, is that we, when we do that, so, one of the things I had run into already last year with the treasurer when I certified, we are allowed to collect the amount that we need in order to pay for our bond payments, but I also collect interest in that account as well, and other monies like the state forest money and such. We can only collect legally what we need to pay, so when you have a healthy fund balance like that, it's technically irresponsible of the district to continue to increase the collection, because then you're just padding your fund balance, when in reality, you need to be using that to offset the collection to the community. The way that your bond levy is done is completely different than the way that your normal levy is done, and the way it's certified is completely different. When we go through and we certify our normal levy, and we have to recertify every four years with the community, get it approved, when we do that bond, they're certifying for the life of that bond. And so, all they're certifying is that we can collect what is necessary in order to make those payments, but that's with that fund as a whole, not necessarily
A annual basis?
Exactly, with the entire fund. And so, that interest is supposed to help offset what we're collecting from the community. So, last year, when I had collected, I had a conversation with the treasurer and about rolling it back, because we had enough to somewhat offset our collection, but not fully offset our collection for the year. And at that time, we were still talking about the state forest money, that million-dollar collection that we'd gotten, and what we were going to do with that. So, we opted not to roll back that year, but if we were to have gone into, like, when I certified for November, if we go into 2020, not having rolled back, we're padding our fund. It, it doesn't make sense, and it doesn't look good, per se, to, to do that, when we have the money in there to help offset that for that year. Now, with that being said, each year, the bond levy does have to be reevaluated with our current fund balance, and your current interest rates, and what you're collecting to determine what you can responsibly collect from the community with, without overtaxing them.
So that fund balance made its way to that level due to the timber money that we, we were able to keep?
Yep, partially timber and interest. So I'm collecting on the debt service Yep, partially timber and interest. So I'm collecting um on the debt service fund, I'm collecting anywhere between eighty to a hundred thousand in interest a year.
So the interest was not part of the original revenue um.
Correct.
Project.
Yep, I collect interest on that. I um invest and uninvest twice a month, all of our funds um in order to get the most bang for our buck. Um and so uh we continue to earn money on that. So for a while, when you guys had um the original forty million dollar bond collection and it sat there in that account, it was accruing a lot of interest during that time period. Um and that interest had not been paid or hadn't been spent because we hadn't rolled back the levy collection yet on the debt service fund. So it sat there.
And this is the second year that you're getting to uh keep the?
State forest, correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so we'll.
We didn't get as much this year, though.
No.
Is there is there a forecast?
There's only so many over here.
Yeah.
Is there a forecast of what that debt service will look like the next year for the rate?
Um I can run a calculation. Yeah, that's not difficult because all I do is we have three point three million in. Um I have a long term debt schedule that goes out for the life of the loan and I just run it out.
Yeah, because I guess what my I'm getting at is if we roll back thirty six cents, I'd hate to do an increase of thirty six cents if it's a manageable increase, some way to make that that impact on our taxpayers a little bit.
Less dramatic.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Um I can run, so what I can do and what you see in a lot of districts when they're running a levy is you'll see um.
They they don't, they don't, I don't think they'll remember the cut.
No, exactly. You'll see a staggered chart and you're going to see that like a bar graph and it's going to have two different numbers, okay? You're going to have your debt service or your bond levy and you're going to have your regular levy and they stack together to show you your total um collection amount.
Right.
I I I can run one of those and then you can see that for the life, let's say, if we were to go out four years, what it would be like for now versus four years based upon an inflationary factor for your assessed value of timber.
And I think that's important when we make our decision to see what the bottom line will be for the taxpayer.
Okay, yeah.
So when we collect in our first year of the new levy.
Yep.
That's the year I want to focus on particularly.
Okay.
And then four years out.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, both both.
Perfect.
Both of them split out and then what that total that total per thousand is going to be.
Okay, um yeah.
Basically, the total the total tax liability.
Okay.
And then also how that goes down, how that rate's going to go down as that four years progresses would be really helpful as well.
Okay, um would it at all be helpful to see um comparison with Mason and Kitsap County school districts? So their levy rates and where they're how they're taxing?
I think Kitsap County for sure.
Okay.
Because we pretty much gravitate towards that direction and that's where people compare us.
Mm hmm.
Their their rates.
Yeah, comparisons.
Shelton would be.
Comparisons are really important when we're trying to explain this to other people. Well, here's what other districts are doing.
Okay.
Of course, it helps to start with something reasonable on our.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly. Um okay, so then we'll we'll um we'll put something together uh with that as well with our Kitsap County districts. So basically, what what I consider our peer group, um so it's who we use at the bargaining table and all of that kind of stuff, okay? So we'll do uh Kitsap County uh peer group levy rate comparison and we'll um do the total impact of all levies for debt service and general fund over the life of a four year levy. Be able to present those so that you guys can see what those numbers actually look like.
That would really be helpful.
Do what are we doing to communicate this um from giving back to going forward um with the the tax, the taxes? How are we communicating communicating this to our community?
Well, that was part of my board letter, but I was waiting on information back from me that I hadn't gotten yet, mostly that, which was just what you presented. Um it's going to be in my board letter with regards to the levy, the bond rollback.
So we're not sending anything out like a.
We haven't started.
We're going to also um.
Do an informational.
Do an, we're going to do a lot of informational publications. We're also going to, we have the new welfare bugle um coming out and Kat's here to tell you a little bit about that during the regular board meeting.
Okay.
And um we're going to have some space in their first um edition to talk about probably quite a bit more space than we can have anywhere else, so because she needs to fill fill a paper.
We'll take it.
And.
Gee, three hundred words, right?
And looking at.
And then we'll have our committee and the committee.
A lot of that information goes out.
That too, okay.
Yeah.
So it's in, it'll be multiple and I think that'll be a great for first edition and it'll get people excited, so it's great, good.
So just um this little blurb that you have here, is this what the levy is currently funding or is this the proposal?
This 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 wouldn't necessarily be what I call a proposal, but it's the things that I know that we do here that would be allowable for an enrichment levy. Okay, so these are the things that I know that we can use our enrichment levy on and I know that we are currently doing. So it's not necessarily me stating this is what we need to do, but these are the options.
So so do we want to put performing arts and visual arts in here?
We can do that, yep.
Or just arts.
Because I think too, because it's all all student activities.
Yeah.
It's not just sports, it's.
Right.
Band and it's, you know, adding orchestra and it's adding more programs, adding our arts programs that we're trying, our visual arts programs are all things that are paid for above and beyond what the state is funding.
It's my understanding that O S P I has been very transparent with the language they're accepting.
Correct.
So that's.
And I.
And we we know what everybody else has turned in.
Yep.
In fact, this morning at the Mason County.
Yes, it does.
Mason County. It does.
Yeah. This is a combination of a few districts.
We had an, I have to forward to you, we had another um district shared what they turned in that just got approved. So.
Okay.
Everybody's sharing that, so everybody, that's part of what's making it go from weeks to a couple days.
Exactly, because we're all on a tight timeline. Like when everything's said and done, I'll likely have three days to get this approved um so that we can get everything down to the county and get so I mean, we're talking quick, quick time turnaround for all of this. So we're doing, I'm trying to do as much research as possible to ensure that it can fly through the approval process so that um we're ready to go when we need to be.
One one quick thing, and this is more directed towards you Dana, um with regards to the hundred and fifty four unfunded positions, it'd be helpful to have a a breakdown kind of as to what those, how those those positions are at now, where where they teach at and really tell the story about the prototypical school model and how North Mason doesn't fit in that.
We can talk about, it would be harder to say exactly who the positions are, but we can talk about positions that we wouldn't have without it.
Okay, that yeah, however, however, that's going to be.
Because it's not necessarily this position at that school, but it's we're funded for this many elementary positions, so we would have
This many less.
Elementary teachers or.
Which means class sizes would be that much bigger.
You know, the these other positions that we have that support teachers, we probably wouldn't have.
Okay.
Although many of those we're funding out of categorical dollars.
Mm hmm.
So probably what we would have to do is move those positions out and get rid of them and the support would go away because our first dollars are going to have to be spent on the classroom and closest to kids, so.
And one of the biggest under fundings that we actually see um at this point, because the the state funds teachers at a rate per child, so if you have this many kids, this is how many teachers you're going to get. But they haven't changed how they they um fund support staff. So your custodians, your para educators, your business staff, all of those positions since I I want to say it was like nineteen seventy eight or something.
They haven't, that wasn't changed with under McCleary?
No, that no, that changed under McCleary. So like to have um a nurse, I think you need eight thousand kids.
Yeah.
Per nurse.
I remember.
To have a fully funded nurse.
Yeah, they they did change a counselor aspect. They increased the partial counselor but only in like I I believe it was five high risk districts, so that portion went up. A perfect example is so in the late seventies, I T computers was not a huge thing. So we get funded in this district for like one point eight I T individuals. We could not function with only one point eight I T individuals. It would be impossible, but that's all we get funded for.
We have like ten less custodians.
Yeah.
Than we have under the funding. I mean, just and with ten fewer people, I don't know if we could even guarantee the bathrooms got cleaned every day. So that's just not acceptable.
Yeah.
Well, and if Ashley, if we go beyond the average of seventeen students per teacher K two, don't we lose funding then?
You lose funding. It's a very um it's a very odd way that they start to take the funding back.
Very mother may I.
Yes, but they do. They they start to take them, so then it's basically a catch twenty two because if you don't have the money to hire the teacher, then your funding, your class size is higher, but then they give you less funding when you didn't have the funding to begin with to have the teacher.
They haven't funded the additional classrooms that district needs to be able to have smaller classrooms.
Because they don't have enough capital dollars.
In in the last four years, maybe this is something else, I don't expect you to have this off the top of your head. The last four years of the levy, when we've been able to do the one percent a a budget increase per year, what's our costs have been?
What have we increased?
Yeah, so I mean, the dollar, you know, we're allowed to go one percent over plus new construction, showing what doing that, but plus what, how expenditures have outpaced that.
I I don't necessarily know that off the top of my head, but what I can tell you is.
Or even C P I or whatever.
Two years ago, when I started here, a little over two years ago, um you guys had a budget of twenty five million. Okay, that's what you guys were receiving and that's what you were spending.
Mm hmm.
Uh my first year here, I think you spent twenty four million plus some change. Um our budget right now and our expenditures are thirty six million. In two years, we've gone up that much.
Hmm.
That's a very steep increase. That's additional staff, that's additional purchasing, that's I mean, it's a huge increase. Yeah, so and that's just since I have been here. Now, prior to that, I know that because the McCleary um fix wasn't done yet, um it was a lot slower than that. Um but when you take a look at our enrollment, our steep enrollment increases, which you're going to hear about here shortly as well, um along with our revenue and expenditure increases, um we're outpacing.
But I'm 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 talking in regards to um enrichment, what levy dollars for levy activities, because I don't want to mix general, I know it's hard.
So you want some numbers on that?
Yeah, just.
As far as property value increases?
For the dollar amount that we've used our our levy for, those activities basically under here, how those expenditures have gone up, those costs have gone up, because once we start mixing in general ed or basic education with our levy, I think we we start losing.
So here's the difficult thing, Craig. Prior to this legislative change last year, um levy wasn't tracked like that.
Oh, okay.
I I would, nobody in the state would be able to, now by law, I have to track. That's why we have that sub fund and we have a zero zero and an O one sub fund.
We'll cross out that request.
Yeah, so it just went into the pot.
Okay.
And don't, well, we have to keep in mind that the levy pays for these things, but we're also, aren't we supplanting a lot of these things too with?
Yeah.
Our money, our our money?
Yeah, with comped dollars in order to keep ourselves functioning.
Yeah.
It's something that um all districts are dealing with right now. We do have to be very careful about it and what we end up doing is we end up changing how we deliver programs in order to try to prevent ourselves from supplanting. Because if you do supplant, you can get yourself sent into a lot of trouble during an audit. So what you do is you sort of tweak the program a bit, you tweak the job description, you tweak what the person's supposed to be doing because then technically, it's considered new and.
Oh, I see.
You're not supplanting. Um but again, that's a lot of pre-work and thought going into all of that kind of stuff to ensure that you're not going to get yourselves into a position like that. But it is what you end up doing because before, when you could use the levy for these type of things, but now you can't, you couldn't get rid of the position, so what are you supposed to do?
Okay, okay.
Thank you for your mind and the way that you can keep this balance. I I I don't know many people that I can talk to and listen to that you give it to us, you know, where we can understand it, but it's the most complex, unbelievable, where we don't, the funding is ridiculous. I mean, it's all over the place and there's so many rules and here and there. Just we don't tell you enough I I that how much you're appreciated, but wow, that's that's crazy.
Yeah, it's definitely been interesting.
All right, well, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Do um any of the bargaining unit leaders have any questions or comment?
Um Craig, you asked about that. It was two point two nine eight in two thousand sixteen. So it was two point two nine eight, so roughly that same two thirty already.
Two point two nine, was the levy amount?
Yeah.
In sixteen. So it dropped our, so the levy dropped.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I was getting to, yes, how each year that levy drops. Thank you. So that was a seven cent decrease in one year alone. Um you guys have any questions who came in just to highlight? Okay, any other comments before we adjourn this?
Well, I just like the idea of when we finally get this together, I really liked the idea of comparisons and um a sheet that's got some basic talking points.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that.
Mm hmm.
Ashley, did you want to collect your documents until we have the committee meet or how did you want to do that?
Um as far as the items that I need to prepare for our next.
No, the documents.
These ones.
Oh, yes, I can.
No, I made notes online.
And bargaining unit leaders, they're helping for committee members? So we have somebody who wants to do that, would you let me know? Dan will be, Dan will be the administrator on the committee, so I'll have him kind of spearhead all of that.
All right, um barring any other discussion, we'll go ahead and adjourn this and have a little, I don't know, five minute break before the start of the regular meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.